Okay, welcome everyone to the Norton Planning Board's meeting of Tuesday, November 14th, 2021. Again, this is a hybrid meeting, so the public is welcome to participate in person or remotely. Anyone who's in person, as you can see, we're in the community room of Norton Public Library at 68 East Main Street. If you'd like to join online via video, as I can see some people have, you can use the Zoom link available on the meeting agenda or through the Zoom app, use meeting ID 6389291060. There's also a dial-in number to join via phone, should you prefer. You can also view the meeting on Norton Cable Access, Channel 15. In addition, please feel free to email questions for the board ahead of the meeting or even during the meeting to Paul Giuseppi, the Town Planner, whose email address is listed on the posted agenda for this meeting. Again, pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting will be conducted in person and as a courtesy via remote means in accordance with applicable law. Please note that while an option for attendance and our participation being provided as a courtesy to the public and board members, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technology prompts interruption of virtual broadcast unless required by law. So with that out of the way, I'm going to call the meeting to order here in terms of, I don't think we have anything specifically in terms of planning board business and policies that we can't cover at the end of the meeting call.
Correct.
In terms of bills and warrants, was there anything that we wanted to pass around to?
To the revisions.
Okay, so we have a Verizon bill if anyone wants to take a look at. This obviously relates to town staff needing to have a mobile phone. Shocking. It's a very controversial bill there. Approval of minutes, I believe we do have one updated set of minutes that was sent out to us, correct? I don't know.
Yeah, I didn't have a printed copy.
That's fine. So did anyone have any additional comments to those minutes that they'd like to pass along at this time?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Just for the Julie, can you state which?
Oh, sorry, 10-19-2021.
Thank you. Okay, so thank you Julie for the motion and Wayne for the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go to the roll, starting in person. Julie?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So the minutes of the 19th are approved. We also have general business item here for signing off on Leonard Street, that is for the subdivision, is that correct?
No, no, this was for the widening.
The widening of the road that was approved at town meeting?
Yes.
Okay. I think we could probably take care of that at the end, we just need to make sure that everybody doesn't leave right away, so store that in your memory banks.
Would you have to physically sign the plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the Mylar.
All right.
Okay. Kevin, you can sign in spirit, or if you're up at town hall, you can add your giant Hancock So put that out of the way, we do have a continuation of three public hearings related to Zero Leonard Street. Again, this is special permit 11449, 11450, and 11451 for Blue Star Business Park Phase Two. I know we have some of the members of ConDyne here, and I believe we may have some other people related to this project joining via phone via the meeting. So I will see if the contents even like to start just forwarding new, all just to review the new material that was submitted to us. I know we are still waiting for peer review comments on different items, so.
Good. Well, just to jump into a lot of answer the comments and responding to a lot of the open items and various other additional responses to the layouts, including more than Whitton. There is extensive follow-up that we have that we've gone through in detail, but if we're going to jump into certain items, I want to address a lot of the questions related to Section 4.6 of the zoning bylaws. So in one of the submittals that was from Brandon from the print, that's in the package that everyone should have, I just jumped to page 10 right away, just so I can just run through those, so everyone has an idea of how we're responding. And we do have some additional information that we've just received before the meeting that I think we can share with everyone as well. So as it relates to the Norton zoning bylaw, you know, as we mitigate most of these items, obviously dust were required by construction to keep the site from dust control, we have a soil erosion and sediment control in place, and we have sediment wash basins for the trucks. Same thing that's going on down in Phase One of the park, down in the front buildings. And then when we're complete, we do sweep the lot two times per year, so including the roadway on the way out. Same thing with dirt, we have gravel access driveways, and we do street sweeping as they enter the streets, and the street would be on Leonard Street, so that is taken care of with that. We answered the glare section as relates to the building. The building's built out of tilt-top concrete with a gray and a dark gray paint. There is no glare that comes from these buildings, and there is no glass on the rear side of the two sides of the buildings, going around the back and on those two sides, other than on the front where the office is. All light panels are 20 feet in height, we're required to keep the photometrics on-site, so dark sky mandatory, and we also have a two-tone color design that we discussed that kind of blends into the skyline. As far as odor goes, there's no special manufacturing occurring in the facility, same with smoke, no processes, systems that are being conducted here. And as it relates to noise, again, we've gone through and discussed this an extent, and we put a couple exhibits and charts together, but the rear concrete wall of the building is constructed out of basically almost 10 inches thick, so four inches concrete, two inches of insulation, another four inches of concrete. So two of those walls protect any sound that's on the front where any truck court is. And then in addition, we're constructing the sound barriers off of Janet and off the side of the building that also have a rating. So those ratings for the walls itself exceed 50 to 60 level, and then the ratings for the sound barriers are on the 32 to 36 rating.
Sorry, can you say that one more time?
The sound walls are 32 to 36 on the STC rating.
Yes.
And each of the concrete walls have a range exceeding 50-plus.
The concrete walls is in the building walls themselves?
As the building walls themselves, yes.
Okay.
And there's two charts that were attached to that on the next page, and you can see a semblance of what those STC ratings are. In addition, as we've always agreed, we put the generator on the front of the building, but most importantly, from agreement with the tenant, we did get the compactors moved to the front of the building, so those are going to be located in those first four doors next to the generator. So they will no longer.
Oh, okay, Jeff, were those kind of darker?
That's correct. Where those lines come out?
Yep.
That's where they'd be located, so no longer on the side of the building.
Okay, so you move them from kind of the back?
Yep, they were on the side, side.
Yep, like kind of the last four spaces.
Yep, and now they're on the four that's up front.
Got it, okay.
So next to the generator.
Okay.
In addition, we just were issued a sound study, and basically, I can summarize the sound study, and I can give everyone a copy so they have it.
And this is something that we have not?
We have not seen, that just came in about 5:00 on our way down, so we did engage a group to go through and do that. So when they did measure, so they measured out on the edge of Janet on the property line that's there, and they measured for four or five days that was there over Thanksgiving during the week, and Saturday, Sunday, and various days during the week. So they measured daytime on a weekday was 43, what they call DVA, 36, 37, and 35, nighttime, daytime, nighttime. And by mass standards, we can't exceed that by more than 10 decibels. So that's the rule through Massachusetts, I think it's DPP that runs that. So when they did their analysis, the standards they were getting, with everything they're predicting, most of the sound that they're getting in the background noise is related to 495, so that's a lot higher than it's there. And then they predicted with all the trucks, with the compactors and everything else, the walls, improvements, the landscaping and the berm surrounding the building, that they measured the receptacles right along the two houses on Janet and the end of Janet, about six locations, and those receptacles arranged at a DVA, a projection of 30, 32, 33, 33, 28, 30. So that's below what they're measured in the background noise already out there. So this is a draft just came in, but we have copies of that, we can share with everyone.
I can't promise to make any intelligent questions about this at this time.
I can't either. All I can do is just reverberate and get to the conclusion that was there.
Okay, but the, based on how you summarized the report, which I, again, haven't had time to go through, nobody has?
That's correct, no, only has.
The summary from this firm's analysis is that the addition of the building will essentially reduce the level of noise out the site because it's blocking noise from 495?
That's correct, yes. I think if you want to speak very quickly about that.
Okay.
Oh, good, Jeff, because I need to.
We'll, we'll do this, if you're able, if you all are able to give us that digitally, we'll get it out, get it up online, get it out to the public as well, so the public can view it as well.
So in addition to that vibration, obviously, we have extensive asphalt paving, we have gravel that's below the roadways to handle the trucks, that's the way the buildings are designed, there should be no vibration that's there. Same with electronic and electronic interference, Verizon and Comcast are coming up the street, connecting direct to the building, and should be no air and water pollution because there's no processing going on inside the building whatsoever. Danger of explosions, we don't have a hazardous process going on here, no radiation, and as we'd like to avoid a fire, this building is designed in the latest fire standards and NFPA. So we have fire protection, we have spring post-fire pump, heat detections, and direct communications to the fire department. While we can't avoid a fire, our goal is to avoid it, and hopefully that these suppression systems are the best that we have available today. Hours of construction, we have agreed to modify from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, Monday through Saturday, during the regular course of the year. Daylight savings, adjust Monday through Friday, 6:30 to 5:00, and then 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Saturday. On special occasions when we have to exceed those, we will contact the building inspector and have a discussion based on that. The only time we exceed those is when we have a concrete port, and we have 20, 30 trucks that have to get in to make sure the port gets in within the day. We met with John Curtin on 7 Janet Street, Dawn and I did, we were walking the site and happened to bump into John, spent some time with him. We agreed to install the white vinyl fence on his property at his location at his request, as well as additional plantings at the base of the berm that's going around there closest to where his house is. As we further traversed up the boundary property line where the hand is going up, what we found also is there's anywhere of a ranging from a two-foot to five-foot berm that goes all the way along the property line. So that berm locus, which is right on the line itself, will remain because we don't plan on touching it because our berm is 30 feet for the most part back from there, but that also protects any sort of drainage coming from the neighbors' properties under our site and our site under their site, it's already there. So that's in place, that's in that location. We also did a shadow study, so we went through that, we submitted a shadow study that's there. The shadow study that's been submitted does not include the tree line, so there's no trees on the border of this property for all of them, so we went through the four quarters, and the extreme white-gray is at the less than 10% of each of those four, summer, spring, we have winter, and fall that's in there. And when we looked at the tree line of putting John's property, the curtains, the pines are anywhere from 95 to 110, so we had those measured, as well as the maples below that, 55 to 65. And then there's a miscellaneous of mixed heavy brush pines and saplings below that. So we were there at 2:00 in the afternoon, we visually saw the sun as it was going down and setting, and we could tell at that point that with the tree line that remains and the berm that we're putting in, the shadow is not going to exceed any sort of part of the property line because the trees are there. So the trees are on both of our properties, we do not plan on removing any of those, they will all remain around the entire perimeter.
And that's gone to Horsey-Witten, I assume?
Yes, yeah, everything has, except for the new material.
Yeah.
So that's kind of a quick analysis of some of the open items that we had in the back. I'd like to make sure Brandon gets in and addresses a lot.
I have a question.
Sure.
When you met with John, with Mr. Curtin?
Yes.
Did you bring in a six-foot high fence, because he originally asked for an eight-foot high fence?
It is a flex that's on his decision, whether it's six-foot or eight, it's his decision, six-foot or eight-foot, I don't, and location-wise, location-wise, he'll have to determine where he wants it.
I understand that, but in his email of September 24th, he asked for an eight-foot high fence.
Doesn't bother me either way.
Well, okay, should be part of the.
Sometimes what happens is those eight-foot vinyl get a little not as strong as the six-foot, so that's a call that John can make, if you have something.
Yes, I know, it's his decision, I just want to make sure he's in agreement with whatever.
Is it okay if I speak, because sometimes I just don't want to speak out of turn?
At this point, please, yeah.
Okay, I prefer an eight-foot one, as long as the type of fence that it is is a top-quality fence, I don't, I think that it's not going to be too much an issue with the little back or so, as far as that, I prefer an eight-foot fence.
Sure, that's fine.
Thank you. Thank you for the question, John.
Again, I brought a card from DePreet Engineering, good evening, sorry. So since our last meeting, about a week ago, we responded to Horsey-Witten's second review letters that they sent out. Most of the comments related to stormwater and wetlands, ConCom issues, we did have a hearing, I think it was last week, they closed the public hearing at ConCom, resubmitted materials last, like I said, later last week, for the holiday, in a revised landscaping plan yesterday, addressing, I believe, addressing those comments, I don't know if Horsey-Witten has had a chance to look at them, but just, you all have my response letter, I think, in front of you. Just flipping through them, the first six or so were stormwater calculation-related items, if you have any questions, I can surely answer. Seven, they asked about a future potential well for irrigation, and we did show a potential future well location between the two buildings, obviously that would be permitted through the Board of Health. There were some comments related to fire hydrant placement, circulation, and the water main, and I talked, I think either me or Dawn has talked to, or met with both the Water Department and the Fire Department. I was talking to Frank Fornier today at the Water Department, got him revised plans, don't want to speak for him, but I think we addressed all his comments and questions. We did add a couple hydrants per the meeting with the Fire Department, so we have, now we're proposing four hydrants, the first one is down at the entrance to the parking lot up of the proposed street, there's one in that parking area up near, kind of if you're looking at this plan, the left, bottom-left corner of the building. Then there's two around the cul-de-sac, one basically within 100 feet of each building's utility room for the Fire Department connection, which is a requirement, so we met with the Fire Department, they sketched up where they were and added them to the plan, so I think they're in agreement with the placement of those. We provided, Horsey-Witten had a couple questions on truck circulation with Building 12, sorry, pencil over here. So we did a revised truck analysis showing that trucks can get into those dumpsters of the southernmost section of the back of Building 12.
I know that was something they raised at the last meeting.
Yep, yep, so.
So Brandon just run like auto turn?
Yeah, so it's actually.
I know we saw that, right, didn't we see that? I feel like we did.
They have it on one of the site plans.
Yeah, okay, there it is, yep.
Last sheets. So we did, we just added analysis, get in that last spot, just because it was a little bit tighter down there. So we did provide, then we provide the fire truck access out the emergency exit to Janet Street. The next section is all wetland buffer zone.
Brandon, before we get too far off of hydrants, I know we kind of missed a little bit, so there's two down by the cul-de-sac, one by the entrance to the building, and one by the left corner of the building?
Yes.
So there's nothing in the back by the box truck court and the entrance to Janet?
There's an existing hydrant on Janet at the end of the cul-de-sac, so.
Okay.
Let me explain here.
Okay, now we have the comments from the Fire Department, but just in terms of doing mental, okay, there's one there, one there, one there, and there's, I didn't see, mention anything up there, just.
There's one here at the corner of the building.
Yeah.
There's the one here at the entrance to that parking lot down the bottom of the screen there.
Yeah.
And there's.
The two by the cul-de-sac.
The two by the cul-de-sac, and then there's, if you go to the Janet Street, there's an existing hydrant that actually today is located where that emergency exit is, so basically it comes straight in at the end of the line, so we're just taking that line, extending it into our site, and relocating the hydrant off to the.
So I'll just push.
Yeah, it'll just slide over about six feet, so it'll still be at the end of the cul-de-sac where it is today, just about six feet south.
Yes, otherwise it's a roadblock and that's not very easy.
Yeah, yep. While we're kind of talking about that area, there were some questions about snow management, did talk to the DPW Director, he had looked at the plans, proposing signage out there to not block that entrance, basically what he said to me was, you know, in the immediate storm, his job is to keep the road clear, but, you know, he'll keep that on his radar. Once the road and the cul-de-sac's clear, there's plenty of room to the south of that to pile snow. Obviously, any snow on our site, we would manage, we would store inside our site, but the area where the actual entrance goes out to Janet Street, so this area on the southern side, either on our property or right away there, to store snow without piling it on immediate waters. So the next kind of couple pages were more related to the landscaping plans, we worked with the conservation agent to swap out a couple species, got the last plan over him today on some of the trees along the, on the berm, and also along the roadway, some kind of native, more native species, some of them were, some hybrids. Planting on the berm, there was a question about the juniper that we proposed can actually grow to like 70 to 80 feet tall, which I thought was too tall for the berm, I think it was a Horsey-Witten conundrum, so we just swapped that out with, I believe, a different species of juniper that is more in the 20 to 30-foot range maximum. Still that evergreen bushy, which is the shorter version.
The concern being that the berm soil isn't as.
Yeah, just the height of that, you know, having a 70-foot tree on top of that berm, just the stability of that with, you know, with regards to the berm and also the plan So there were comments on the plantings, and then Jeff went through the next few pages of my letter on the bylaw items, shadow study, which we just looked at, and then the last page of my response were the four waiver requests that either we or Horsey-Witten identified during the review, so I'll just go through those quickly here. So the first one is town subdivision guidelines, which technically we are a subdivision, it's kind of, you know, not a traditional residential subdivision, I think a lot of people think of, but we do fall under the subdivision guidelines, it requires three feet of cover over a drainage pipe. Where this comes into play is along the back of the building, the roof drain pipes that cross out from these, I think there's seven of them, pipes along the back, where they cross under the emergency access road, they range anywhere from like one and a half to two feet of cover, but they're HDP pipes, that's well within manufacturer's recommendations for cover, under that condition for that, that we did. So we're asking for a waiver from three feet cover.
Those are running under the access road?
Yeah, they come down internal to the building, run under the access road and into the pond, and that's the, it's basically taking the back half of the building's roof drainage to that pond.
And Brandon, how much cover do you have?
Anywhere from like a foot and a half to two feet, mostly around two feet.
Okay.
As you get closer to the pond, that kind of outward edge, you're around like 1.7, just because you're coming out of that slope.
Yep.
But which with HDP, HDP pipe, and under that condition, under that surface with that load, you can go up to one foot of cover, per the manufacturer's recommendation. The next waiver is dead-end street length, so requirement in Article 5, Section 5.4.1D requires that dead-end streets be less than 1,000 feet in length. This proposed road to the cul-de-sac is approximately, it's just, I think, a little under 2,400 feet in length. All of the neighborhood's construction, geometry that meets the town requirements, it's just the length, and to mitigate that, we did provide the emergency exit to Janet Street to provide that secondary egress. The next, the last two waivers are both related to landscaping, so the next one is from Section 175-18.5, and it requires a buffer street, a buffer strip, so basically, for instance, anything, the required landscape buffer that's along the front here, we meet the requirements for width, they require one street tree for every 30 linear feet of street frontage, which we meet, but they also require three shrubs per 100 square feet of buffer area, which I think it's more geared towards, you know, more kind of public street where, you know, something around here where you get a lot of maybe foot traffic or residential traffic, the only traffic on this road would be going to these two buildings, so we felt that would be a lot of shrubs just in that landscape area on a dead-end industrial road. So we're asking for a waiver from that requirement, and the second one's kind of related, it's parking lot exterior landscaping, it's Section 175-18, it requires the perimeter of a parking lot, have again deciduous street trees every 30 feet, which in any area, we meet it in any area that faces the road, where we don't meet it is just in kind of back on this truck court area where we would just be putting trees that would then face the woods, so we didn't provide street trees along that back edge there, just in that area internal to the development between those two buildings, so those are the four waiver requests that we're making as part of the application. And then the last couple pages of my letter were just the same property value analysis that kind of I had prepared, and we did correct it for, there's some kind of misworded on how the truck court was described, but we cleaned that up, that language up, that was pointed out at the last hearing. So basically, none of the comments really changed any of the geometry of the site, any of the stormwater of the site, it was just some more backup calc and rotations mostly to some of the reports, and then changes to the landscape plan.
Okay. Obviously, your responses are waiting for kind of.
Yeah.
The closing of some of those comments.
Yeah, we, I haven't heard back from Horsey-Witten, I know they downloaded it because they have an air travel access thing yesterday, I think everybody was, we were having some server issues at my office, so I think they looked at it, but I don't know how far they've gotten in their review.
Okay. And or is the board have questions on these updates, these updates to the project or anything else?
Oh, actually, one more thing, we did have, at the last meeting, we asked, we had the revised perspectives, we didn't have them, got them later that, the next day, so this reflects the changes we made prior to the last meeting with the sound walls, those additional plantings against the sound walls, that kind of peninsula we talked about by swerving the road that we were able to get, that's the trees, you kind of see the kind of cone-shaped, everybody's down in the center. This, again, the trees that we show in the background are the kind of existing scale trees that are there, so that's a view from inside the site, and then this is that same view that we showed before from Janet Street, so the trees, the kind of the darker green trees you see in the foreground, those are, that's an actual photo of the trees that are out there today, you can see 7 Janet Street off to your right, so you see that emergency access with the gate, and behind the gate, you see those plantings, and then behind those plantings is the sound wall in the building, so you can kind of just see a couple edges of the building here. Obviously, again, these pictures are taken back in September, so they, you know, do have all the leaves on the trees. have all the leaves on the trees, but...
They'll definitely thin out in the following...
Yeah, for sure, but this was just that same view we were showing before with, mainly just, we talked about filling up that gap area that was created before. So I think that's kind of everything we have to present, so if the board or anybody has any questions.
Wait, please.
I have a question, is there, kind of landscaping, is there any reason why you can't have the four-year monitoring period for trees as recommended by HW?
I don't think so, what do we propose, two years?
We propose two years, we just haven't seen four years.
Two years is fairly standard, so I think that's what we proposed.
Standard is standard.
But that's Horsey Witten's consulting.
I planted a lot of trees in two years.
Right, yeah, and but we're, we have to have growing seasons anyways for the conservation commission as well, so I think conservation has two growing seasons.
Okay.
And no changes to the sound walls even though you moved the compactors?
No, we kept the sound walls the same as they were proposed.
All right, I was assuming that, but just wanted to make sure I was right in that.
Yeah, so we kind of clarified it on this plan, the blue...
Yeah, the blue is still the...
Is still the sound walls, other than where they cross the road, those would be that swing gate.
Yep, okay.
There's some comments from members of the board. Kevin, I know you're joining us remotely again, so I'll make sure that you're able to get up mute if you need to.
Well, I'm all set, nothing for me to, thank you.
Okay. Paul, I think you mentioned that we do have somebody from Horsey and Witten on the call virtually. Obviously, they may not have a chance, had a chance to review everything, kind of given the Thanksgiving holiday and everything, but if they'd like to make any comments based on the materials they have reviewed and summarize anything that they feel is still open, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Steve Stanish, we're project engineering at Horsey Witten. I did have a chance to look at the second review as well as the storm runner, who did comments to see how they were addressed in this most recent submittal that we received, I believe, yesterday, and I did take a quick look at the relevant comments as well. The majority of the comments that are outstanding have been addressed, there are few comments that I noticed that I would want clarification on, that they had submitted, but they're very minor. One is just a loosening of a front connection table for regraft stabilization, I think there were one or two front sections missing on the table twelve, and then another was regarding lighting schedule, it's a comment in the site plan, just noting a lighting timing for the buildings.
Okay.
And the last, the last comment that I saw for the weather review, and this is not the only comment for the weather review, our senior colleagues at our LA have not seen these responsive, they made their official comments yet, but I did notice one or two pointy discrepancies on the layout compared to the schedule, that's all.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Anybody have any questions for the, or is it a project engineer here, or should we let them get back into their, into their reviews? Okay. Steve, you could just hang on the line for just a little bit longer, I think we did have one member of the public who may have more of an engineering question that we may not be qualified to answer, so one second and I'll get to that. I think members of the board are okay. If there's any members of the public that'd like to ask a question, you have your hand up here, if you could please come to the podium, Brandon, if you don't mind seating that spot for a second and address the board.
Okay, was a question based on what you had said. We met last time, we were talking about the tiered approach to have the foliage and the blockage. I may have missed it, but could you just go over again, remember we talked about having the berm, having the base plants, and then having trees or something on the top and...
Sir, if you could just, I know you're asking a question, just trying to address your questions to the board, just to kind of prevent it back and...
You didn't hear that.
It's okay.
When we talked last time, we talked about multiple things to hide the building, and it seemed that when we were toward the end of that discussion, we may have had some plantings in conflict with one another in terms of being able to do that walk up to the, all the way up the berm and then planting on top of the berm, and I was just wondering what the resolution was on that, I know that they were going to go back and look at that, and maybe he said it, maybe I just missed it, maybe my glasses fogged up, my ears, I didn't hear it, but that's what I was trying to understand.
Okay, yeah, I think I'll, I'll let the engineer from our peer review firm answer that, but I think to a point, he's, they're still reviewing the updated landscaping plan, so all of their landscape engineers haven't made their final comments yet, but I'll, Steve, I'll let you kind of speak to your thoughts at this point.
I just wanted to clarify, I don't recall that initial comment, was that the, I know that their initial conservation commission hearing regarding the plantings separate of this, I don't know if that was asked there, I did not attend that, someone else performed it, but they are addressing the planting plan and the specific species that are on top of the berm as well as in that back area, and how they're able to provide the adequate amount of foliage and provide good cover in that area.
Okay, my concern was doing it so that you had that progression of vegetation moving up without the various plants interfering with one another. You know, there was, there was talk of having some fairly large trees at the top of the berm, that may not have been adequate, and the slope of the berm reflecting what kind of plantings would go there. All I'm looking for is to make sure that the vegetative cover is working in harmony, so to speak, with the slope and not complicating the different types of plantings that would be there so that you would not have that effective green visual coverage, does that make sense?
Yes, that is something that our LA and as well as our colleagues are looking at as part of their review. That is something that's being looked at and how plants and other planted do work together, so nothing is overcrowding a different species or just shutting it out of competition entirely or anything like that, so...
Exactly.
And LA is landscape architect, correct, Steve, just to...
Correct, yes, sorry, yes.
Okay, great, that answers it, thank you.
Okay. I have a few other members of the public here, if they'd like to ask any questions, come to the podium, Mr. Curt, please.
Good evening, everybody. Just my quick question was about, I believe that, one of the questions that somebody had asked was pictures regarding what the, for the four seasons, not just, you know, what it would look like at one time with the trees filled in, I don't know if that was something that was, I thought I was going to see tonight or...
That was, I think that was in relation to the shadow study, in relation to the time of day and where the sun angle would be in relation to the trees. The trees weren't on that plan, which I know Brandon did show at one point, but that's also something that's part of Horsey Witten's review.
In terms of, is, were we going to be seeing any pictures regarding what it would look like with the trees, or are we just going to be hearing what the review from that would be if it had the trees?
It's just the review if it had the trees, it's not a, I don't believe it's a rendering with the trees built into it, it's showing the sun angle.
Would there be, would there be a possibility from the engineering perspective to actually see what their perspective is before having basically the arbitrator look and see what that would be?
Arbitrator, you mean the peer review?
Sure, sure, sure.
Okay. Yeah, Brandon, if you could pull up the shadow study again, I'm not sure if you have that available for easy kind of consumption. Mr. Curt, would you mind if he came and just walked it through it?
Sure, no problem, thank you.
Okay. So I know that this is basically showing the shadow study is, as you said, the darker shades of gray are tied to less than 10% of the day, correct?
Yeah, so I think the request at the last meeting was that the shadow study be done March, June, September, December, which is what you see in front of you, so...
The lighter shade of gray is less than 10% on the overall, right?
Yeah, so it's, exactly. So if you, you can kind of visualize, in this view, this is the spring view, as the sun moves from, I guess, the right side of the page in the morning to the left side, that less, you know, the lightest gray color is that the last 10% of the day of the daylight, where the shadow would be, and I, what Jeff was trying to explain previously was in this area here is where those trees that we mentioned, those existing trees, 50 to 55-foot deciduous and then some taller pines are, and what we're trying to explain is even though those trees aren't built into this model, which I'm not sure if they can be or not, since those are higher than the building, the shadow would be blocked by those trees, so, and that's kind of what I was trying to visualize last time with my, my picture, was basically showing that those trees, one would cast, would already be casting a shadow of their own onto Seven Janet Street under that property, and then the building shadow, since it is a shorter, the building's 40 feet, those trees in the 50 to 60-foot range, that shadow wouldn't be projecting over those trees, it would be hitting those trees and blocking them to a degree, so, but, so this model shows it without any trees or out any berm or fence or anything like that, just use everything as totally flat, and it shows that, that is that 10% of the day, the last kind of 10% of the day, I guess, would be projecting that shadow if there were no trees there across the property.
So it's like straight up building, Brandon, no mitigation, this would be like worst-case scenario?
Yeah, basically, you know, the way the architect looks at this is it's a totally flat, it's like putting it on a table and putting the building there, nothing, no elevations, no topography built into this, I'm honestly not sure if they, if they can build that in, but, so that's the spring one, the summer one, obviously, since the angle of the sun's different, the shadow's entirely within our property, same with the fall one, just spills over a little bit on the southern side of the Janet Street cul-de-sac into that woods area, and then the winter one is fairly similar to that spring one you saw, just because the angle of the sun is more southern in the sky.
So that corner of shadow essentially throughout the year kind of rotates from the truck court over that property a little bit, not accounting, not accounting for the...
Yeah, it's almost, you know, you can kind of view it as a sundial.
Yeah.
Okay. So I think that's what was asked for, for the four-season views.
Yeah, but as you said, you're not sure if they're able to layer in kind of a tree thought process there. If they can, it would be great, if they are unable to, then they are unable to. Obviously, we've, we've talked about that section of trees repeatedly, how you're looking to add to it with the berm, but it's maybe not as full as we might want in some areas, so we just have to kind of take that as it is in relation to the overall landscape plan. Okay.
And then Horsey Witten has this, and they're going to review it, so I'm sure, I know Janet was very kind of particular on what she was looking for, Brandon, so I'm sure she has questions.
They provided to them, yes.
Yeah, she'll, she'll give feedback, Paul, I would think, yeah, okay.
She did not strike me as a shy person. Okay, thank you, Brandon, for going through that one again. Okay. Are there any questions or comments for members of the public who are here?
Just one other brief thing to, as a follow-up on that.
I'll go to you next, sir.
The only thing I can say about that is that we all looked at this together, the, the way that you said that a minute ago was kind of funny, it's always nice, there is a good amount of space that's between those trees, I'm sure, not unless we're here are experts on shadows, but I can tell you a couple of things that I know for a fact, some, it has to do with angles, and some, I don't know if the, how those pictures were or weren't taken, but the, based on the angles, that definitely changed that, so that needs to be looked at, and again, the arbitrator will be able to give that as a better perspective. The only other thing I was going to say is that the space in between the trees also affects the shadow factor, we're not talking about a blank wall or anything like that, so all the spaces that are in between there definitely is going to affect the shadows and this tremendous amount of spaces that's there, even when trees are put in, even at their full extent for maturity, there's still going to be some spaces, and I don't know exactly how many years that's going to take, but it's a presumptuous statement just to assume that there's not going to be any shadows, because there absolutely will be with the spaces and not just now, but moving forward, so.
Thank you, Mr. Curt. Sir, I saw you had your hand up, if you'd like to come up and make any comments to the board or ask questions, if you please do, if you could just state, just your name and your address, please.
Craig McQuillan, 105 Root Street.
Okay.
My property is adjacent to Steve's. Quick question, how much, in terms of, how much money have you allocated towards landscaping?
I haven't allocated anything.
Oh, so we...
They...
Just a ballpark figure, then?
I could ask the applicant if they're willing to share that amount, I'm not sure. The, I know there's been back and forth on the different species of trees and shrubs and everything, and that's what their landscape plant engineers are doing and what the, our peer review landscape engineers and architects and arborists and ecologists are recommending. And the only landscaping costs I know are how much it costs for somebody to clear my lawn, so I'm not a qualified person to comment on that.
But that figure will be available sometime in the future.
It may or may not be, I'm not sure, I can ask the applicant if they're willing to share, otherwise I don't ask my neighbor how much he spends to get an entry.
Would he be willing to disclose where he buys the trees, is it going to be local or is he going to go outside of town?
I, I don't know that.
Would he be willing to disclose that?
That, that's a question for them.
Okay.
Is, are you just kind of focusing on kind of buying local or in terms of making sure they're fitting with the local habitat?
It'd be nice if these species were purchased locally.
Okay. I'll certainly ask.
Thank you.
Obviously, I'll let you share as much or as little as you'd like.
Our landscaper is from Norton, so he does all the landscaping, he's done all in Buildings Four and Buildings Five, he has his operation that's in Norton, he used to own some of the parcels there where we're located at, right on the corner there, so he's the one that does all the install and does all the maintenance, so.
That's primarily we're using local subcontractors.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions or comments from members of the public?
I just did one more.
Yeah, just to make sure you're on camera and you're on the public record here, we're going to make sure that...
Okay.
Sorry to make you walk all the way across the room.
Steve Novick, address as well, to Janet Street. Okay, this goes back a couple meetings, but I was asked to bring it up again. We really haven't received an answer yet, and I'd like to get some clarification on it. This is, you know, when we look at this, with the land at the end of the cul-de-sac, it was redesignated from agricultural to commercial, and our taxes were based on those designations. It's gone commercial, that, that's a done deal, we now have a developer, and we're doing, the developer's doing what the developer does, he's brought a client in, and they're moving forward as they should be doing. This is directed to the town. I, I think that, and I don't know who it is in the town, if it's a planning board that brings it issue forward or if it has to be residents, but we're in a new environment here. We now have a developer there, it's now commercial. I, I'm not sure the house values in the immediate area, I'm just talking about the immediate area, are the same anymore. And I know that Condyne was requested to look at that and they did, but I, I can't help but feel that having some other entity, more so the town, make that determination if our values are not the same anymore and if it needs to be readjusted. I don't know where to go, I'm, I'm asking that of this board if I have to be redirected or if the board brings it to the selectmen, but in fairness to a number of the homes that are in immediate proximity and the fact that it wasn't commercial from day one, it was only several years ago that it was changed. And we know that the, the incoming company that's going in there had, had gotten a significant rebate in taxes, as I understand it, from the town. So in due respect, if it's appropriate, I would like somebody to tell the residents that either the rate is fine or it should be redacted a bit to a lower rate based on significant changes in the immediate area.
You're speaking in terms of property taxes?
Yes. But that's, that's all I'm looking at and we've talked about it at a couple of the meetings and I haven't had any kind of response from anyone. So if this is the wrong group, then I have to be redirected, that's fine, or if it's something that the planning board can take forward and present to the selectmen that the issue has come up and we need an answer, or do we have to go somewhere else to get that? I want to try to work through the system here and I think it's important for a few of the residents. I'll leave it at that, okay? But that, that's, is that clear enough what the concern is?
I believe it is, yes.
Okay, but, but I need to have some feedback either from your office or tell me to go see the assessor's office or go see the selectmen. I don't have a problem doing any of that, but I would like to just bring this issue to a closure so that at least there's some comfort that the town has looked at this and has made a decision on it and that people can feel comfortable that it's been looked at.
Okay. Yeah. My short answer to you would be the tax assessor's office is in charge of assessing all the taxes and determining what is valued at what rates. Other than that, I would, I think that...
The assessor has...
The assessor and the town manager would be who I would go to. Paul, unless you have anything else?
I think the assessor's office would be the correct place to go.
Yeah.
But does that, is that me that should go forward with that or is that brought by the planning board to the assessor's office that this issue has been raised at these meetings? I mean, my take on it would be you're the lead in moving this project forward and I, I would think rather than me as an individual going, that at least it could start off. I'll do whatever needs to be done, but it would be, in my mind, unless I've got it wrong, appropriate that this was brought up at the planning board meetings and that you're alerting them to it, you want to have a discussion with them, you want to bring a couple of residents or you want me to sit down. I would just like to get closure on this. I mean, the only entity that has responded to that at all has been Condyne and, you know, in fairness, that's, that's decision they came up with, but I'm not sure that that should be the only decision.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, see, I think that, I think we can speak after the meeting if you'd like.
I'd be more than glad to sit with you after.
Sure.
Okay, we'll do that. Thank you.
Are there any questions for members of the public or members of the board, either for the applicant or review at this time? Mr. Curt, you have another, another round?
Yes, one last one. I don't want you guys to see too much of the time.
That's okay.
I'm briefly just going to read the article again that I read last time. And again, in accordance with Article 5, Section 4.6, "Any use which would be harmful, detrimental, hazardous, offensive, or would tend to reduce property values in a district where it is located by reason of excessive dirt, glare, odor, fume, smoke, refuse, noise, vibration, electric or electronic interference, air-water pollution, danger of explosion, radiation, fire, any other reason is hereby prohibited, whether or not enumerated around uses otherwise permitted in any district." Basically, obviously, that means that it supersedes anything. I think that the applicant has done a really good job in many ways to try to address this and I think that the way that some people might look at it might be a little bit different than others. I think though, some of them are, you know, kind of like Band-Aid things that, that there are issues and I'm not sure necessarily the issues can be resolved at all. I think that attempts are being made to do that, which are good attempts, I'm just not sure that they, you know, are enough or are, are, are going to be able to work. So just briefly, there's just a couple of things I wanted to go over. Couple of things we're already going over tonight, so I don't have to go over that, but the dust and dirt factor, there's a couple of things from that, the trucks in, from the docking bays that are going to be there, obviously, there's going to be movement that's going to be there. When dust and dirt kicks up, kicks up into the air and then it settles, especially for my house on 7 Janet Street, there's not going to be a way that this can be avoided, okay? So that's why other alternative things will be, need to be looked into. There can be a compromise that can be made and it can be done in an appropriate manner. The, like I said, the dust and the dirt, as that kicks up, that's going to be something that's going to be continuous, that's just a factor that's there, no wall or anything else is going to take care of that. The noise factor, I think one other thing I want to keep in mind here is that we're dealing with an entire industrial park, so when I, when we talk about, you know, the truck docks that are here, the noise factor, the certain, you know, sound numbers in terms of what it is, well, that's all amplified by all the different areas, the trucks, the docks that are on the other side. So the noise factor is much more significant than is being portrayed at this time and that needs to be kept in mind, not just these single isolated spots, but the entire basically industrial park, the combined noise factor from that. And then just the last thing, very briefly, is the vibration aspect. Anybody that lives on Janet Street, I'm sure Steve can answer to this and some of the other people, we have big trucks there down the road, you can definitely feel a vibration, just the way that it is, I don't know the exact reasoning for it, you can feel it. There's, let there be no mistake about it, when there are the docks that are here and that there are the trucks, there will be a vibration that would be felt at my house and as they, houses go back on Janet Street, I'm sure that they'll feel some, to some level beside that. And I'm going to leave it at that, but thank everybody for their time.
Any further comments or questions this evening? Okay. So I know we're still waiting for some comments from different peer review items. Paul, we have one, our next meeting, I believe, is in two weeks, correct?
Fourteen.
On December 14th? Correct, okay. I think given that Horsley Witten has all of the items or will have all of the items shortly, that should be enough time for review since there's now a holiday in between there. Do you agree with that in general?
By their contract, they have 14 days, so we get it, you know, get it tomorrow, we'll get it, we'll get it over to Horsley, or of course, just copy them, yeah.
So in terms of the applicant, does the 14th make sense in terms of the next, next meeting for the team? And that is our final meeting, scheduled meeting at this point of 2021. Okay.
Sheriff, motion to ex, to continue, special permit 11449 and 11450 and 11451 for our next meeting on December 14th.
Thank you, Julie, for the motion and Wayne for the second. Is there any further discussion on the motion to continue? Okay, hearing none. Julie?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, continuing to the 14th. Thank you very much, everybody, for your time this evening.
Thank you.
I know members, we do have a Mylar to sign here. In terms of additional planning board business, Paul, is there any updates in terms of joint meeting or anything in terms of appointing an interim member?
No, not yet, I, I will continue to coordinate with the town manager to make sure that that's taken care of.
I mean, at, at the risk of being overly blunt, we're, there's a point of diminishing returns with...
Grace.
So if we're not, if, this shouldn't be something that I don't think takes that long to figure out. If it's something that's going to continue to cause challenges, then...
But I'm not aware of anyone submitting a letter of interest either at this point, but I'll, I'll get with...
But I'm not sure how much we've been beating the drum either, so, in terms of trying to recruit people, so if we turn that up, then that might...
Right.
Go in that direction.
Because they haven't, they have not asked.
Yeah.
I have to get with the clerk, she's supposed to advertise it.
Okay. Did you have anything else that you wanted to discuss in terms of additional items for the planning board's awareness review and there's things that are happening, because I know we don't always see everything that is going on. Steve's been doing a lot of videos with different...
Yeah, we, just a couple of things on, on that front. We actually did a, we, we started an initiative to promote local businesses, so we've done us, we just did our fourth video today with a company called Everyone's Endy, an interior design company. We've done a Bog Iron and a couple others, with the goal of just getting business to those folks. So fortunately, Bog has had a few people, Bridgetts has had some people come in with it. It's just, one of the things that I try to do is help coordinate with local businesses. So West Main Street's been a, been a focal point. We did get a grant for the parking management study. I'll be meeting with the consultant on Thursday to go over their scope and get that launched and hopefully they'll be done, I believe, by June.
Oh, wow, that's great, Paul.
Yeah, it's a short, it's a short term, I put it...
So like a six month?
Yeah.
Oh, awesome.
It's a short one.
Oh, that's great.
So that's, that's going on. I've been working, focusing a lot on the implementation structure for both the master plan and the, the West Main Street study, so I've really kind of ironed out more of what that, what that looks like and will have been starting to work with some of our, my colleagues who will implement some of the sections like conservation and transportation. So, and we also did receive a grant too for what they call a phase two assessment for contamination at Reed Park. So this is an important one because this will tell us, when this study is done, which will also more likely be at the end of summer, what the extent of the contamination is at that site. So it'll, it'll identify what's there, it'll identify a plant for cleanup, and that right there will tell us, will tell potential property owners or developers at that site what the risk is. So that moves the ball quite a bit on that property, so.
Yeah, there's a, that's a giant unknown, but I think that no developer is going to touch with a 10-foot pole.
Not yet, but once, you know, but by next summer, that changes.
It's huge.
You have math to put into it.
Right, exactly. And that's, that's it for now, there's a lot of stuff, but I'll ramble, don't want to do that.
Okay.
But I'm excited, I mean, there's a lot of good things that we're working on and I want to also point out the work Brian's doing, he's going beyond the administrative role and helping out with a lot of things and he's picking up things really quickly.
Just finished all the minutes.
That was a huge...
That's a solid one, right there, Brian.
So we're going to have a lot of minutes there, we're telling this, okay.
That's, that's an accomplishment in and of itself, that's for sure.
Okay.
I should point out too, we will, we actually received, but we shouldn't have received it, there's a special permit that will be coming for marijuana delivery business, they had to host community agreement in our little colony, but they haven't...
Ladies?
Yeah.
Yes, but they haven't received their preliminary approval from the cannabis control. It was submitted unpermanized, but we just had to tell them, you can't submit this yet. State law says you have to have the, I call it preliminary approval, it's a different term, but, but once they get that, then it's ready to go. We, we had a staff meeting with them. It's, it's not a new building, it's a renovation of an existing one, so it's not a very challenging site, so, but we talked about things like parking that they'll need to look at and they'll need to really flush out their, the number of trips generated by this.
Traffic studies, all right.
Maybe, maybe, it might not be a significant number, we don't know yet, I don't know the nature of those trips.
Okay. Okay.
I know the nature of them, I just don't know how many one vehicle, how many deliveries a vehicle...
I know there's been a lot of challenges at that at the state level because of the state regulations requiring two drivers in the vehicle.
Yes.
And that makes it, makes every trip twice as expensive, so.
And they are, they have to have GPS monitoring on them and it's...
That, that, that seems more like a table stakes, but when you, when you double up the, the labor costs in this labor market, it's a challenge.
But there are a number of regulations that they have to meet, so.
Yeah, okay. Okay, well, I don't have anything else for, for the meeting this evening, so I'm going to stop talking.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Julie, for the motion and Wayne for the second, continuing your streak this evening. I am not hearing any further discussion, so Julie?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone, we will see you in two weeks.